You can sit right there and they'll call you when it's time. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here today. It looks like we have some good-looking scouts in the front of the room. Welcome to Council Chambers. We're glad you're here. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and turn the time over to Councilmember Taylor to assist us.
Mayor, thank you very much. We're honored to have Troop 849 here. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves, and at the end, if you wouldn't mind asking the audience to arise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would go ahead and say your name and your rank.
I'm Richard Adams, Scoutmaster, and I was an Eagle Scout in my youth. Okay.
Hi, my name is James Johansson, and I'm rank two.
Hi, my name's Rigdon Bingham, and I'm first class.
I'm Callan Lewis, and I'm second class.
Carter, my name's Carter Hunter, and I'm first class.
My name's Arterwa, and I'm in second class.
My name's Bradley, and I'm a Tenderfoot. Audience, will you please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, they get better every meeting. Is there anything you'd like to say to our scouts tonight before we dismiss them?
We're just grateful for you all and for your hard work to make Gilbert a brighter place. I know a lot of our scouts are engaged in service projects on a regular basis, and we are taking notice. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Scouts, and we have given them a copy of the Constitution that they can continue to develop their citizenship. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I'd like to invite Dr. Dan Mooney, the pastor of Elliott Road Baptist Church, to the podium to offer our invocation. Thank you, Pastor Mooney.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we come to you this evening, and we are grateful that you've given us the privilege to live in a free nation. We are thankful that you are the supreme ruler, but we are also thankful for the human rulers that you have allowed to be placed over us. We ask this evening that you give our local town council wisdom as they represent us in government and deal with the issues that are currently before them. We thank you for these things. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate that so many ways. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentis.
Here.
The Quorum is present.
Thank you. At this time, we do have three proclamations and presentations this evening, and so I'll turn the time right now over to Councilmember Yentis to assist us with Agenda Item One.
Can you guys hear me? There it is. I have the distinct honor of inviting a couple friends up to the audience with me. If I could invite, excuse me, Carrie Collins up, as well as the Velazquez family, this is kind of an important one. March, we are going to be recognizing as Brain Injury Awareness Month, and this one's close to my heart. I know several veterans who have traumatic brain injuries and how that's affected them, as well as their family. So if I could just... Carrie's actually the Executive Director of the Brain Injury Alliance, so if you wouldn't mind introducing your guests and talk a little bit about what the Brain Alliance does.
Okay, absolutely. So the Brain Injury Alliance, we're a statewide nonprofit. We offer assistance and support for those living their best life after brain injury. That can be everyone from neuro professionals to caregivers to those who have survived brain injury. We're here tonight to honor Manny as part of Brain Injury Awareness Night. He had an accident almost 10 years ago, a rollover car accident, as he was preparing to be a Chandler police officer. So it changed his life and his family's life in many ways, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Say hello, Manny.
Hello.
My name's Ramon Velazquez. Thank you for having us.
My name's Angel Chavez.
Mireia Velazquez.
Elliot Chavez.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you, Carrie. And in recognition of Brain Injury Awareness Month, I'd like to recite this proclamation. Whereas traumatic brain injury is a public health problem that impacts a reported 1.7 million people in the United States annually, and whereas of these individuals, 80,000 to 90,000 sustain permanent disability, and whereas the Brain Injury Alliance of Arizona offers resources, survivor empowerment, and education for all types of brain injury, and whereas in Arizona, yearly, there is a reported 1,233 deaths, 6,581 hospitalizations, and 54,310 emergency department visits, resulting in over 574 million hospital charges due to traumatic brain injury alone, not included... Including acquired non-traumatic brain injury, and whereas unintentional injuries accounted for 86% of traumatic brain injury hospitalizations, and whereas most traumatic brain injuries are predictable and preventable through the understanding of associated risk factors. Now, therefore, I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. If we could take a picture, I think.
Thank you, Manny, and thank you, Carrie, for being here and presenting that. Appreciate it.
We want to invite up Chief Solberg, our Gilbert Police Chief, and Nicole, please, and also Brandy. We'll have Chief on the outside. We're not giving him the microphone tonight. I'll pass the microphone over to Nicole, and tell us what this month is all about.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ray. We're excited. This is the first time that we're proclaiming March as Bike Gilbert Month. The Valley claims April as Bike Month, and the nation is May, but we want it to be unique, and of course, it gets hot in April and May. So March is Bike Gilbert Month, and we have some events coming up that we're really excited about. A community bike ride with the council on the morning of March 16th, and that event ends right before the Kidtopia event, which is here at Civic Center, and we're going to have a bike safety rodeo called Biketopia within that event. So we really hope that everyone will come out for the first year of our bike events and help us promote bike safety in the town. We just wrapped up our bike plan. That's the first update we've done in 13 years, so we're really hoping for some bike improvements in the town in the near future. And I wanted to also let Brandy speak. She is the owner of Global Bikes, a local bike shop here in Gilbert.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Brandy Leepack. My family owns Global Bikes. We're located in Gilbert and Guadalupe. We're super active in our community. We love helping people get outside and explore our beautiful town. We also run a nonprofit where we get at-risk youth outside, mountain biking, and enjoying our great state. We're super happy and excited to celebrate cycling with you in the month of March, and I just want to thank everyone for the work that you do to keep our city safe and fun and enjoyable for cyclists.
So we invite everyone to come down Saturday morning. I get to lead this bike ride. I love road biking, and Gilbert has come a long ways over the last 10 years in the safety for road biking and the bike lanes, et cetera. We have ways to go, but we're going that route. We also have a proclamation that I want to announce. I'll just read a portion of it here. Whereas the bicycle is a fun and viable form of transportation, an excellent form of recreation, and whereas many visitors and residents in Gilbert will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of March through the community events, helmet and bike safety promotion, or just getting out and going for a ride. And whereas the education of bicyclists and motorists as to proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas the Gilbert Town Council urges all who support bicycling to participate in the events planned for March and urges all road users to share the road safely. Please share the road safely. Therefore, Jen Daniels, the Town Council, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Bike Gilbert Month.
Well, our next presentation is a council recognition of the 2018 Waterwise Gilbert Sites. So let me just read a little bit about what Waterwise Gilbert Sites are. Gilbert Water Conservation works with homeowner associations, churches, schools, our own municipal facilities, businesses, and other commercial water customers to help them use water wisely and still maintain a thriving and beautiful landscape. Participants receive a customized water budget based on square footage of lawn and desert-planted areas at their specific site, and customized water budget is displayed on a web dashboard in a visual and intuitive format. This way, stakeholders can see how close they are to their water use target each month. In 2018, we had 214 participants, and sites worked with the Gilbert Water Conservation and saved 187 million gallons of water, which equates to $336,000 in avoided water costs for these sites. How about a round of applause for that? Not all program participants earn the Waterwise Gilbert distinction. To be labeled as a Waterwise Gilbert, a site must be within 20% of their annual landscape water budget, and for some, this may even be their second or third or fourth year of receiving this distinction. And this obviously is a major accomplishment. So I have Heather. Heather, can you just share a little bit about who you are and your role in this program?
Thank you. My name's Heather Turentine. I'm the Water Resource and Conservation Coordinator for the Town of Gilbert. I have the honor of leading our amazing water conservation team as they work with all of these sites and helping the town with their water resource Well, tonight, we're proud to announce that of those sites, there's 85 Waterwise Gilbert Sites for the year of 2018. We have five sites. This is their fourth continuous year being labeled Waterwise Gilbert: Bella Vista, Devon, Silverhawk, Silverstone Ranch, Val Vista Place. We have additional sites that this is their third continuous year in Waterwise Gilbert: Carriage Lane 10, Evans Ranch, Morrison Ranch Highland Groves, Morrison Ranch Lakeview Trails North, Vista Escondita. Many sites made two continuous years in the program. Of those are Ariette Greathearts Academy, Artema, Ashland Ranch, Chalice Christian Church, Higley Manor, J.C. Steakhouse, Highland Ward, Lindsey Ward, Liberty Market, Lindsey Ranch, Morrison Ranch Lakeview Trails South, Sonoma Ranch, The Cova at Vincennes, Vintage Ranch, Windmilled Ranch, Templeton Manor, Spring Meadows, Circle G Meadows 2, Circle G Meadows 3, Morning Ridge, eight municipal facilities, four district parks. Many more sites were labeled Waterwise Gilbert for their first time. We have ADOT Santan Freeway, the Allen Ranch Ward Building, American Furniture Warehouse, Ashley Heights, Breckenridge Manor, Catalina Ward Building, Circle G at Ocatillo, Circle G at Silver Creek, Cornerstone Highlands, Curtis Wright, Cooper Manor, District Lofts, Farmhouse Meadows, Gardens Parcel 5, Gilbert Junior High School, Gilbert Ranch, Harbor Cove, Highland High School, Islands, Martinique, Mesquite High School, Mesquite Junior High School, Redemption Church, Reserves at Val Vista, Sahara Playa Palms, Santan Ranch, Serena Shores, Settlers Meadow, Shamrock Estates, South Valley Junior High School, Stonebridge Lakes, Township, Val Vista Park Place, Vincennes, and all of the town's neighborhood parks. Would the representatives from those sites who are here tonight please come down and be recognized?
And this is going to be a photo op for all of us. A round of applause to all of these wonderful sites here in Gilbert.
I just want to make a comment, too, of who you see here. These are really involved Gilbert residents who are serving on HOAs, who are contributing through their churches or schools, so that's a really good group. Can we tag all of you to be part of our boards and commissions, too?
And again, let's have a round of applause.
Thank you to all of you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here. That concludes the Proclamation and Presentations portion of our meeting and moves us to communications from citizens. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we have one individual that would like to speak. We invite Mr. Paul Rodriguez to the podium. Paul, if you can share your name and place of residence, and we will give you three minutes to speak to us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Paul Rodriguez. I am an advocate for homeless cats and kittens in the Town of Gilbert. The last couple meetings, I quoted former President Reagan for his compliments that he paid to people who do volunteer work. I realize he wasn't speaking directly to me, but I'd like to assume that I'm part of those many volunteers. I also think it's important to mention President Reagan in the context of his ability to compromise with and work with people who he didn't necessarily agree with on all points. Just a couple of brief examples, and then I'll try and tie this to the Town of Gilbert. Back in 1981, there was a major piece of tax legislation that was passed by Congress and signed by President Reagan. Unfortunately, the numbers didn't quite turn out the way a lot of people thought they would, so President Reagan negotiated with a number of key Congress people and, believe it or not, a year later, passed another piece of major tax legislation that modified the 1981 law. Obviously, I'm oversimplifying here, but on another front, there was a lot of doubt about whether or not the social security system would be able to be viable into the future, and President Reagan worked with Speaker Tip O'Neill, and they put together a Social Security Commission that came out with a number of proposals that were adopted by Congress. So the point I'm making here is that I think it's important to... It's important that people work together, even when they don't necessarily agree on everything. So on that basis, I am going to present to the council what I believe is a compromise on this homeless cat situation in Gilbert. I've also contacted the Reagan Presidential Library and asked them for permission to use President Reagan's name when I present that material to the council. I have not yet heard back from them, but I did speak with someone specifically, so we'll see what happens there. Again, the connection to Gilbert is that there are a lot of people that don't agree on this situation, but I think it's important that we hear each other and that a compromise be brought forth, and I'm not going to force that onto the council. I'm going to present a specific compromise for the council's consideration, and I thank you for your time this evening. Good night.
Thank you, Paul. That moves us to our consent agenda, and I look to Vice Mayor to assist.
Mayor, we have nothing to pull for consent, so what I'd like to do is move that we approve Agenda Items 4 through 15. I also like to move Agenda Item 20 to consent, and Agenda Item 21, and I have some additional language on 21. With Agenda Item 20, I would turn to Councilwoman Yentis.
I move to approve Brent Yap, Alan Kranzberg, and Val Gale to the Development Authority as regular members with terms beginning March 12, 2019, and ending March 11, 2025.
And Mayor, we'd like to move Agenda Item 21 to a continuance to the March 27 meeting. Excuse me, 21st meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to our public hearing items. I look to council, are there any items besides 18 and 19A that you wish to pull for discussion?
Mayor, item number 19, please.
17, please.
17. All right. That's almost all. All right, we will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 16, close the public hearing on Agenda Item 16, and entertain a motion.
Here, I move that we approve Agenda Item 16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Agenda Item 17, Councilmember Taylor.
Here, thank you.
Oh, I'll open the public hearing, and now it's you.
Mayor, thank you. Just for those that following the item, 17 is a motion to be able to acquire some property roughly across the south side of the canal from Neely Elementary, just for those following here. To me, I do support where this is going. It's a little premature for me, just in the fact that we don't have really good negotiations, that there's not a settled value yet on the acquisition price, and so I think a little more time would resolve that, but as I talked with staff, unless there's new information, that's still an issue that they're working on. But I do think this is something that it really gives staff the authority to go forward with the appraised value that we have received already, regardless of the purchase of that. I just think if they can acquire that, since this is... It's not something that's a super-high priority, public safety, you know, critical infrastructure. A little bit more time, I think, would make a better transaction than a forced transaction, which it has the potential of.
I had a conversation with staff on this item today, and maybe you and I have different information, because it's my understanding that this is a price that's been negotiated. Can I look to legal or to VIP team? Yep. Oh, we have a volunteer.
Hello, Council. Thank you. So what we're asking right now is just for...
Wait, introduce yourself, because you don't come very often, but you volunteered, so we're assuming you're a person of authority in this capacity, but introduce yourself for us.
Sorry, just ramming on in there.
You're good.
My name's Toby. I'm the project manager for this, and right now, what we're asking for is a resolution to start the discussion about, you know, what the offer is for the land that we need. The first offer that we like to make, as per what our resolution states, is what the appraised value is for, plus anything else, and that opens the field for discussion. Maybe the appraiser missed something in its initial go, or there's just something else that we need to consider when we negotiate further. So this isn't the final offer that we're asking for. It's just the beginning point, so we can open discussion. You give us permission to start that.
Councilmember Taylor, do you want to hold off on opening the discussion with the property owner?
Mayor, my thought is... My understanding is they can actually do that without this effect. What this really does is this gives them the authority, if we don't come to a price, where we can effectively just take it at the price we decide, which would be the appraised value, and it's almost a quasi-eminent domain authority that we're giving in this.
Well, we use eminent domain in a very different context. I want to make sure people understand that...
I know. That's why I said quasi.
Oh, I was like, I don't want us to compare that.
That's what got me to pause a little bit, because if we can work out the details of that, I'm completely supportive of this, as long as we can get to an agreed-upon price.
This is a pretty standard procedure that we've used often in the town. David just ran down to rescue you, Toby, so I don't know if you want him to rescue you or not, but yes, Toby, high five.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Taylor, this is a very standard process that we're following, that Toby and the team have been in discussions with the property owner. To begin negotiations, we need authority of the council to be able to begin negotiations. Our negotiations from a Capitol team always begin with the appraised value. If there's anything different than that, that's going to go through legal. It's going to come back to you. You are the ones that have to make that determination, and this is, again, really just to give us the permission. If that value is something different than that, that's something that will come out in the wash, and we didn't have any intention to do any eminent domain take on this one.
So once the negotiation finishes, it'll come back to us for final approval?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, if the agreed-to purchase price matches the appraisal that we have presented to you, then it would be executed, because you've given us authority to that amount. If the amount is something greater than the appraised purchase price that we have there today, it would come back to you for reconsideration.
And what if it's below appraisal, and we're at an impasse? What would happen in that case?
That would be an unusual... Madam Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, that would be a very unusual situation, and it's one that I really don't know what would happen. I don't know that that's ever occurred.
Chris, do you want to talk... We often will talk about these in executive session, if there's something that's sort of out of the norm, but I think we do want to give authority to the team to start the negotiations, and I think if that's where we're at and we can all agree to that piece, I don't want to hold them up on that, recognizing that appraisals go stale after a certain amount of time, so we might need that lead time for us. Is everybody...
Mayor, I'm perfectly fine with that, because I do like this. I want it to move forward. If it goes below appraisal price, perhaps we can just have a checkpoint to sign off on that, but if it's at or above, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Thank you. So we'll look to legal and Patrick to make sure that we are kept up to date on those negotiations. Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 17 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 17.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 18. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 18, and at each of your places, I have an updated document. Valerie, will you put this on the screen, just so that there's some clarity and transparency for the public, are those watching? As you all know, we've been having these System Development Fee discussions for quite some time, and we've moved through this process, recognizing that adoption is set for April 20... April 18th. Thank you. And that is what we've been working towards. And that is what we've been working towards, in a lot of conversations with Kelly, and she might be the best one to give us the updated, sort of, to bring to us the updated conversation, but this is something that several of us have talked to Kelly about offline, recognizing that we were all a little uncomfortable with what we saw previously. So this is a lot of information and a little bit difficult to read, but Kelly, if you want to help us and just break down the bottom line, we basically changed or moved one lever, and Kelly can talk about that. Thanks, Kelly.
Mayor, council, happy to help. So what you're seeing here is, with the system development fees, we have already adopted the projects, and we're now doing a public hearing on the actual fees. We can adopt something less than the statute, than the maximum that would be allowed under statute, and what we have here is the mayor's requested to look at if we didn't put the full cost or put the fees down lower so they didn't include perhaps the full cost of Aka Tio Road. We would still show the full cost in the study, but we could adopt a fee that was less by some margin. So in this example, thank you, you've got it all on there. This is a true finance spreadsheet, which is small print and lots of numbers, but the point of the spreadsheet is that it has about 25% of the Aka Tio Bridge project, which would be considered growth under this, or we would be planning to get system development fees to cover. The other portion would need to be covered by another funding source in order for the project to move forward, but this would allow the system development fee to come down on the roads portion, which would also cause the overall impact to the businesses and homeowners to come down. Is there more that you wanted me to say on that, Mayor?
No, that's really helpful, and just that, obviously, there's been a good, hard look at the numbers to try to make sure that we are staying consistent with the growth of the community, recognizing that we, none of us have crystal balls to know how much growth will actually occur over the next little while, but we have those projections built into this. So what happens on this, and I'll just draw your attention to the final percentage increase, you can see kind of where we've been and where we hope to be. So under this final, under a single-family home, you have an 8% total increase, which if you compare us to other municipalities, is one of the lower on that spectrum there, we're kind of middle to lower, and so I think that's pretty consistent with where we've been previously. And then if you look at, and we've only looked at one specific type of commercial on this, there are multiple types of commercials, commercial spaces that, but what you see here is that the original proposal was actually for a 77% increase, and we've now taken that down to a 35% total increase. And again, if you look at that comparatively to the neighboring municipalities, or I would consider that to be a much more reasonable place when you spread that out. So that was the effort to bring this forward, recognizing we're not actually adopting anything, this is a public hearing, but I wanted you all as the council to hear where we were at, at this point, and that, what the intention was for the April meeting. All right, any other questions for Kelly about this particular agenda item at this time? This is our last public hearing before the hearing where we will be expected to adopt these, and from a timing standpoint, we can't delay it anything past that, so. Chair, Councilmember Taylor? We're formal here, I'm sorry.
We're still a town mayor, we can call each other by first name, right? The cost of the bridge, maybe you don't know this, might be unfair question, what would be the cost of, instead of a bridge, you know, a road that connects instead of a bridge? How much would we save, and what would the fee impact? Is there anybody that's brave enough to try to connect that?
Are you talking about one that would bisect the park?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, it would be a, it would be a road that-
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I try to stay out of engineering, so I'm going to phone a friend on this one.
Yeah. There's lots of roads through washes and things, but-
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Susan Anisterbo with the CIP Group. In this instance, we have looked at this bridge from both the highest, or the, not the highest, but the most expected ability to run capacity on that, which is the number that we put in this SDF study. We did an initial study that was the lowest level, and we can't really go all the way down and back up, because there'll be some impedance to the drainage basin that this, that this road would have to go through and up, but in order to basically keep the water to flow back and forth, I think the minimum amount cost that we had estimated was around $20,000. Yeah, 20 million, sorry, yes, thank you. No, thank you, I appreciate for that, 20 million. So, but again, that was a cost that we had put together about two and a half years ago, so that probably doesn't have any escalation with what we're doing right now with some of the construction costs, so.
I see Toby and David back there, a little bit squirmy about, do you guys want to-
About 25 million, where it was at for that.
Okay, I'll translate for the audio. 25 million.
And it's a five-year-old estimate.
We're at a better plan than Vice Mayor Cook's plan originally, which was to have another country pay for it. Remember that plan?
I still, I still feel that we have an opportunity to-
I hope you work on that.
-private investment.
Build our bridge.
And again, we have naming rights as part of the Parks and Recs Board, we've talked about the possibility of doing that, so I think that's still a valid option.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have.
But the other one about having-
You make a lot of things happen, I doubt, and so I'm always proud when you pull it off. Any other questions or comments, Chair?
Mayor, maybe I can just make a couple of comments. That was really my only question on that one. So I think we're headed in the right direction. They're still a little bit high, I'd like to see us, you know, a little bit lower on the overall increases here, and I'm not going to restate what my concerns were from before, I'll just add a couple of things as I was doing additional research. When we think about the people that are going to be paying for this, let's talk specifically on the road again, right? It's the houses that are not benefiting, right? So it's the people, because the main benefit that we have is, besides, you know, an icon, is, is safety, right? We need to get our, we need to meet our response time from the east to the west, because we built the fire station on the east. The people on the east that already have the fire station are the ones that are going to pay the SDFs, it's not the people on the west, because their homes are already built. Yeah, yeah, so, so that seemed a little bit awkward to me, that the people going to pay for the bridge are not the ones necessarily benefiting it, at least from the fire response time. I know there's other benefits from it. So I guess those are the two points that I just wanted to make, without restating before, certainly the concern on business impact, and seeing a higher cost of the house going into a market that is slowing down a little bit, is a regressive action, because it'll just be harder for people to get into homes with a higher SDF that is just going to be passed on to the consumer there, and then businesses wanting to come in as well, you know, that's going to be more of a challenge. So Mayor, I'd like to see that a little higher, I don't know that that's necessarily going to be the prevailing view tonight, but thought I would just share those ideas here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Now is the time, because the next meeting is the adoption, expectation of adoption, and really from a timing standpoint, we'll, we'll need to do that, so.
Mayor, I really, I really appreciate the efforts being made on this to see where we can kind of, you know, cut and make sure that we're not impacting, you know, growth and the ability to expand here in Gilbert. I do echo some of the concerns that Councilman Taylor made. I don't have a philosophic opposition to a roads SDF, but I do feel like if we're making, you know, system-wide improvements, but make, having them, when the benefactors are going to be current residents, and having the majority of that still fall, specifically under the, under the road SDF fall on newcomers, I think that's a little problematic. So I think, I really appreciate the work being done, but those are still concerns for me.
Thanks, Councilmember Yentes. Councilmember Anderson?
What is the, I know with SDFs, there has, there's usually a nexus of some kind between the fee and what we're building and how it's connected and so forth. And I don't really have a problem with the intersections, I can see that, but I still have an issue with when we, when we ask builders to build half-streets, and I think this included collectors in this, does it not, in the SDF, as well as arterials?
Yes, arterials and collectors, but they have to be major collectors, so not project-level improvements that are only serving a smaller area of town, part of the backbone infrastructure.
Right. But our expectation in the past has been that the developer of those sites would build those half-streets, and sometimes I guess there'd be reimbursements in the, in the future and so forth. The question is, if we're, our expectation is still that, do we, are we then going to also charge through an SDF the builder that builds on the property adjacent to that street, so that there's kind of a double taxation or, or fee in that case?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, that's a great question, and we looked at each project specifically to make sure that there would be no double counting. So the costs that are included in this study would never be covered by a half-street improvement. If there was a possibility that it would be covered by a half-street improvement, we removed it from what is in the system development fee study.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? I'll just add one other piece, and while I certainly appreciate Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Yentes and their perspective on having new residents pay for some of this infrastructure, I can't help but think that those new residents have also benefited from the SDFs that have been paid for generations now in the town of Gilbert, and they are seeing a benefit from what someone else paid as far as growth. And this whole thing came, this whole new roads SDF came about because at last year's financial retreat, we sat down as a council, and we saw that we do not have what we need coming through HERF. Everybody knows that highway user revenue funds are down based on the efficiency of vehicles and all the sweeps that we've had for more than a decade now in the town, and so there is a component that I think we all recognized, and didn't think I would really quote Councilmember Peterson when he wasn't here anymore, but he, it was, it was really, that was a real point of dialogue as we talked about this a year ago, which is why you see this now, and I want, I guess, the public to really understand that we've been talking about this and thinking about this for, for a long time in order to come to this position today. So this isn't something that we thought, oh, we found another way, it was, we don't have the mechanism and the capacity within our current system to pay for some of these growth-related improvements that may have occurred, that will occur as additional residents and businesses come to town. So I want people to know we're trying to be cognizant of that, that growth, paying for growth, really is a conservative principle, and that we all benefit from SDFs that have been paid for the last 20 years in the town of Gilbert, even if you just moved to Gilbert. Yesterday, you're still benefiting from those SDFs that others contributed, so when you contribute as a new resident in a system development fee, which I agree with you, Councilmember Taylor, it's all getting passed down, right, to the, to the end user or to the owner, they have very much benefited from SDFs for years, and now they will pay their share of growth through the SDFs. Just one more caveat, because we talk about regional costs right now, and it's a huge topic of conversation at all of these regional MAG and GPEC and through the State Department of Transportation, the rising costs that we're seeing in the cost of construction, and I want to compliment our team, because while we have seen some rising costs, we have not been as ill-affected as the region has as a whole, and I think that says something about the desire and the effort that our team makes to keep a bidding environment that allows us to still do these projects, to do them in a really cost-effective and efficient way, and they explore all types of routes in order to get us there. So I know it's taking a lot of extra work to be able to fit the same number of projects and, that now cost more, but are, you know, the dollars that we have are still the same, but these projects are now costing more, and we're, we're seeing exorbitant things at, at the regional level that thankfully haven't dramatically affected us yet here in Gilbert, but certainly could in the future, and I think it's just something we need to be aware of, rising labor costs, rising costs of materials, no-fly ash now being created in the, in the state of Arizona, that all having to be imported, a major component of concrete, so I've learned all these technical things over the last decade, life cycle of a street, things I never, ever thought I would know about, but we're grateful as a council that we, we get to learn these things and hopefully make the best decisions possible that will last long into the future. Councilmember Taylor, you had?
Thank you, if I may, and I appreciate those, I agree with a lot of those comments and sentiments, particularly the comments about widespread benefit. I think in the parks, there is an expression of that a little better in the streets, and the streets, the majority, large majority, like 95, 98% of the funds raised through this will really just go for that one project, the bridge, if I'm understanding this, did that get rebalanced here? What percentage of the new monies would go to the bridge versus other projects? It was very lopsided, but I'm certainly more open to it if it, if we see more of a benefit.
In this document alone, what you're seeing is, the total cost is estimated about $61 million, and only 25% of that $61 million is being attributed to actual growth, the other 75%, frankly speaking, is going to have to come from another funding source, if that ends up being the actual dollar amount that we move forward with as a bridge.
In the estimate.
Right, so.
Well, that's a lot better, that's for sure, because like you said, it should go towards more benefit rather than one-point solution. Obviously should pay for that. Thank you, Mayor.
I do not think we have any action to be, oh, we do need to set the public hearing, um, set the adoption. I'm going to make sure we do this right.
Yes, Mayor, and any instruction you want about what you want the adoption documents to look like? If not, we will have them as is for the, the maximum fee.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right, so we're going to give direction to staff for Agenda Item 18. Prepare SDF documents for the April 18, 2019 adoption hearing that would be less than the maximum allowed under statute, with the road fee lowered to include the funding for the 25% of the Aka Tio Bridge.
Second.
That's your direction. I don't think we're voting, it's just a direction.
We need to vote to set the adoption date? No, we're good. We've announced it, and that's part of the public hearing. Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing then on Agenda Item 18 and move to Agenda Item 19. I believe that was Vice Mayor?
That was me, actually.
Oh, Councilmember, no, you're good.
V, V MFL. Thank you, Mayor. This item was brought to us actually by a resident, and I don't think Joe Backus is still here. He brought it to my attention, and I've been working with staff on it, and Joe's been trying to work with staff on it, and I'm just asking if we can postpone this for a couple of weeks so that they can have a little more time. He doesn't feel like he's had enough time to actually look at this and give enough feedback, and since he really was the one that brought it to us attention, our attention, I think he deserves that especially. So I would like to move to continue this item to our next meeting, March 21st.
Perfect.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 19A. I will open the public hearing and get a quick presentation, if you don't mind, Nikki. It'll help set the stage for the conversation.
Let's see here. Let's switch back. That's Valerie. Oh, there it is, okay. Good evening, Mayor and council, thank you. Nicole McCarty with the Transportation Planning Department. Hope you're not too sick of seeing me talk about how things bike and mobility related, but here tonight to continue the discussion and to present to you the micro-mobility pilot program that we've been working on. All right, let me get this working here. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to quickly recap, go over the key issues, benefits, and concerns we've been considering all along throughout this process, talk about the purpose and objectives behind bringing a pilot program to you tonight, go over the differences between the code and the- we've been considering all along throughout this process. Talk about the purpose and objectives behind bringing a pilot program to you tonight. Go over the differences between the code and the code changes in the pilot program, the ordinance and the resolution that you see in your packet. Go into the pilot program details a little bit, and then talk about next steps in our staff recommendation. Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties. It's changing on my screen, but not on the slide.
Joey to the rescue.
I'll use my laptop.
Sing some Rocky music while you run up.
It's not mine. Oh, okay. No. So it's changing here, but it's not changing there. Let's restart your programs in there. Yeah. Go ahead and restart. It's right here. Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. No, that's okay. Sorry for the delay. Okay, we're back on. So we were, we had a study session with you in January. At that point, we received direction to explore pilot program alternatives and to come back to you. We did so February 21st, and we discussed the option of moving forward potentially with an open pilot program. And so tonight, we're here to present and request an action on a proposed code changes to our ordinance and on a micro-mobility pilot program. I wanted to show this slide. This is what we presented at our last meeting, and it really has been the factors that we've considered throughout the entire process and how we weigh these factors and how they have been driving our decisions. So I just wanted to show those very important driving factors again. And really, our purpose and objectives through the pilot program kind of came out of that. Quickly, the purpose of the pilot program would be to have rules and requirements that govern the program and really provide for the responsible management of our right-of-way, and more importantly, promoting the safety of all users of our right-of-way. So this pilot program, we hope will enable, one, micro-mobility companies to operate here in town, but also allow the town to assess the safety risks, the potential safety risks, learn more about this technology and the business model, identify how the model may or may not meet our objectives, and then to make changes on the rules based on an ongoing evaluation of how the program is functioning. So again, we have two items in your packet, an ordinance change, the Code of Gilbert, and a resolution which would adopt the pilot program. Quickly, the Chapter Four currently lists what an obstruction is, but it doesn't give the town authority to do anything about it. And so we'd like to propose a change that would give us the ability to remove and impound obstructions in our right-of-way. And Chapter Two would provide new definitions related to micro-mobility, define the areas of operation that are allowed and prohibited, and also authorize the ability for police to issue civil citations for violations to this ordinance. And then it would revise also bicycle, bicycle definitions to be consistent with state law. Now, the ordinance, of course, is the Code of Gilbert, so that would apply to everyone in the town. The pilot program, on the other hand, the resolution would initiate the program, it would authorize the town manager to adopt a final set of program rules and execute all the necessary agreements to tie the companies to those rules. And it would set forth the terms and conditions, which would be the rules and requirements that participants would have to abide by. And again, this would only apply to micro-mobility companies who chose to execute a license with us in the town. So going back to the ordinance, the, one of the most important points of that section outside of defining the obstruction and what we can do with the obstruction is to define where micro-mobility devices can operate. So they will be allowed on a street with a posted speed limit of 25 miles or less, also on multi-use paths and on sidewalks, except for Class III bicycles would not be allowed on either of those. They would be prohibited anywhere where signage prohibits such operations. So that gives us some flexibility as the program evolves to just, to sign areas that we feel uncomfortable with them operating. They'd also be prohibited in bicycle lanes and on public streets where speed is greater than 25 miles per hour. Now, the pilot program terms and conditions are very long. There's a lot of language in there that protects us, a lot of insurances, indemnification, financial obligations. I'm not going to go through all of them in detail tonight, but I do want to focus on the operating standards we're proposing, and I will also touch on a few of those other items. But in our operating standards, we have general provisions, parking and use regulations, and also discuss how the companies would be required to be involved with our community and communicate with the town. So in general provisions, which is on page seven of your packet or of the actual terms and conditions, these are abbreviated, but they would be able to operate townwide with the exceptions of where we sign or prohibit them. The fleet size, we're not proposing a limit to start, but the town may require fleet size adjustments as we progress through the program. In terms of fleet management, we would require 24 hours after notice to remove any inoperable devices, and a requirement for all devices to be in good working order, and then a minimum of one daily fleet inspection to rebalance devices to ensure they're parked properly and according to our requirements. And then all micro-mobility devices would need to be collected for recharging by 10:00 PM. We hope that that regulation will help with some of the concerns that PD has with impairment issues on them, especially in the downtown area. In terms, in terms of speed restrictions, we're proposing a max of 15 miles per hour everywhere, which can be regulated automatically through the devices, and then 10 miles per hour in dense pedestrian areas that we have identified and can identify more, but primarily Heritage District and the Santan Village areas, what we have identified with, working with PD. And the town may also lower speed limits as we progress through the program. In, response time's very important to us, and we're proposing a two-hour window required to remove an obstruction if it's between 7:00 and 7:00, and four hours at any other time. And for other requests that aren't an obstruction, but maybe they're just too many in one area or another concern or another violation, we would give 24 hours or 48 hours if it's on the weekend or a holiday. For parking and use, basically, the devices would have to apply to those areas that I pointed out in the town code. And then additionally, we put some locations that they'd need to stay within 10 feet away from, such as loading zones, fire hydrants, building entrances, and that, that sort of thing. In terms of spacing, because we don't have a fleet size requirement, spacing and quantity is important, I think, to help regulate where these can go. And so at bus stops, we're proposing no more than six total, including all companies, and at all other locations, no more than four per company at an interval of about 150 feet. And for geofencing, we would require that all the devices are capable of having geofencing, and the town would be able to limit specific geographical areas such as station areas, operating areas, parking areas, by working with these companies to geofence those areas. With shared use of the right-of-way, we have these rules really to protect all the users of the right-of-way. And so the micro-mobility device users would have to yield to pedestrians. Users would be required to dismount and walk devices across all prohibited locations, and they would not be permitted to attach themselves to other devices or carry items that prevent them from being able to operate the device safely. And also, when operating on roadways, they must comply with all of normal traffic laws. These maps are some examples that we've worked up with PD of areas that we're proposing as potentially no-go zones along Gilbert Road. We would probably work with the companies to designate areas directly outside of those zones where they could be parked and staged, but we would want them to be walked while they were in this area. And again, that can be done digitally through, through their app. This is an example of where we could propose a reduced speed zone in Santan Village Parkway And back to the operational standards, customer, community engagement and communication with us is very important. So this is a pretty heavy section. I won't go through everything, but we're requiring points of contact, 24/7, emails, phone numbers, all of that. We're requiring that they work with us to push notifications to users that are important to Gilbert, Gilbert-specific regulations, safety tips such as encouraging the use of helmets. We're also asking that they participate or work with us to push customer surveys out that would be provided for us, maybe end-of-ride user surveys that would help us gain more data and more, more information. And really, the Gilbert 311 is an important, I think, unique thing to Gilbert. In order to avoid PD, I won't avoid PD enforcement, but in order to make it a smoother process, we're looking to utilize that app in a few ways. We're hoping that the customer complaints can go directly through 311 to the companies. The town would be able to monitor that and see how quickly they're responding to customer complaints. Additionally, if PD is noticing issues, they're going to use 311 to take pictures, to notify the companies, and also track the response time. So we're really going to use it as our tracking mechanism and our communication mechanism with them. In terms of financial obligations, the approach we took as a team is to, we, you know, we want micro-mobility devices to, we want the companies to operate here that will help us, you know, decide what we need to change and what we need to do. So we didn't want to be too heavy upfront on the program fees, so we, we came up with some reasonable fees, we believe, for a program fee for us managing the program and also an operating fee for, per ride. But really, as you can see, the primary, primarily, there are a lot of penalties, and we're hoping that this will help curb bad behavior. We have relocation penalties with a tiered fine approach, and this is for failure to respond when we request a relocation of a device. We have the 311 notice procedure for failing to utilize that procedure in the way that we lay out, because again, that will cause more staff time and more issues on our end. We have a violation penalty, basically, for any of the license terms or data-share agreement, and a holdover penalty. So if at any point, we decide to end the pilot program, which we have the ability to at any point, and they, we give them a date and they don't remove their fleet, then we have a holdover penalty per device per day, which is a pretty hefty penalty. So we're hoping that the companies who come to Gilbert want to work with us and want to follow our rules, and we hope that this, these financial obligations kind of lay that out for them. And so next steps, we're here in the pilot program discussing that, but there's a lot more to come for micro-mobility master planning for the town, and that's got to get initiated right away. We'll continue to evaluate results and continue to improve our approach. And with this pilot program, we would propose that we'd come back to you within one year at the latest, more so if you requested or if any issues come up. And then for the rollout, if this were to go effective on April 6th, we would need to do a lot of work behind the scenes to prepare the packet, to prepare our website, to get a lot of education out to our community about this program, and then again, to prepare that detailed 311 process for how it's going to work with our digital government folks and our PD folks. So we are recommending approval of the ordinance and resolution, and we have a lot of staff here who's been involved in this process, so we're here to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Nikki. That's a ton of work, and I know it took a lot of really great people doing that, so thank you, as well as a lot of citizen feedback that was so helpful in shaping a lot of this pilot program. Questions from the council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Probably talking a little bit too much tonight, but also want to definitely thank, this is a lot of work. It's a, it's a lot of really good work. And Mayor, I do appreciate your leadership in helping to open up the window of the future of transportation in the cities, and it's kind of fun to see this project move forward. And yeah, it's fun, and this is heavy lifting, and there's lots of ambiguity as we, we move out, but I want it to be successful as well. So a couple of, April 6th, that's going to come up super fast. And when I looked at the pilot program and a couple of the things, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to be ready so we don't stumble out of the gates. So let me give you a couple of specifics. Like, one of the things that I think is really good in the pilot is the data collection. So are we, and specifically, we're asking for real-time data. Now, having launched some real-time data exchange databases, I know that this is not just something you just turn on. Are we, are we going to be ready, basically, in a month to do some real-time data exchange or at least accepting real-time data from, from these companies?
Good question, Councilmember Taylor. And Mayor, thank you. We, I didn't touch on data in here, but I will point out that's on page 13 of our Terms and Conditions, for those of you who want to get onto that page. And our idea here was when we won't be, we won't be wanting it on day one of April 6th, we'll be wanting it most likely monthly. So if we can get the companies, and also, I want to back up, that April 6th is when it will open, but not when companies have to come in by. So if, if on April 6th, Bird and Lime wanted to come in, because they are the two actors who are in the community right now, they would be required to meet with the town, and we would go over this data section, which basically lays out examples of data sets we're going to ask for, ways we're going to ask for it. But really, they're going to need to meet with our team and our new data expert, Shyla, and we're going to have a data-share agreement that we, we require that can be executed by the town manager, and that will lay out a little bit more specific. So that buys us a little more time to negotiate, not negotiate, but to work with them, to see what exactly they can provide us how we want to. We have some other requirements in here that says that we have the authority to publish this data publicly, to also share with other pilot program participants. That's a unique thing that, we know only Austin, Texas is doing, but we've heard positive results from that, from it being an open, open data that we're allowed to share. We also have, of course, a lot on data security and minimum intervals for how often they provide it to us. So we feel like we got a good core of what we want, and then we can work it out with the companies through the data-share agreement pretty quickly after that.
Okay. And I don't want that to hold things up, but, but I've just done that kind of work, and I know it's not going to turn on in 30 days, but like where that's going. And do you think by April 6th, if we have some people that are ready to go quickly, it might be for Patrick, I mean, are we ready to enforce this? Maybe they start in two months.
I'm sorry, I was going to interrupt you for one second to say to our scouts, thanks for coming, and I'm glad you guys got to hear us talk about scooters. That was really important. So you guys got to hear something, and 10 years from now, you'll look back and say, why were they even talking about that? It's so common. So it's funny, but this is how it starts. Okay, sorry to interrupt, but I thought that was an important moment.
No, thank you, that's great. Are we going to be ready to enforce what we've, what we may pass here tonight?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, yes. So the conversations will begin as soon as April 6th. We don't expect that we'll reach a firm agreement with them immediately on that date. It'll probably take a little bit of back and forth, but when we do execute those agreements, we will be ready to enforce them under the terms that we've established.
So if we, so like Bird is in the town right now, starting April 6th, since we, let's assume we don't have the Ts and Cs worked out, right? Are they going to be prohibited from doing business in the town until we get a signed agreement? Is that going to be what the understanding is? Or talk to me kind of the transition between now and in the pilot.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, excellent question. And yes, we'll give them a reasonable amount of time to work with us to come to terms on the agreement, but if it looks like they are not going to be able to, or they don't like the terms that are contained within the agreement, then they would need to exit the town of Gilbert and take their scooters out.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Mayor, I've got a couple, I've got a few other things here. There's, there's just a lot here, and maybe I'm duplicating things. Again, I don't want this to hold things up, but I think there's some conflicting wording in the documents, and Chris and Nancy, I talked a little bit about this. So for example, we, we say you can't ride a modified scooter, and yet we're asking them to do certain things like the geofencing or some of the data things. So they may need to do that to meet our requirements, and I think that's good. I think we just need to be a little flexible there. If, if they need to put an additional modification to meet our requirements, I think we should be flexible on that condition.
Doesn't that mean like you're cranking up the gas or like, there's like a modification, I'm thinking of it like in terms of a vehicle, but Shyla, there's probably some technical...
Yeah, the modification they're referring to is amplifying the device itself. When it comes to geofencing, that's actually on the back end of each different scooter company actually has, each device is tracking its GPS, and they actually, on their data and on their system, have maps that are laid out. So when scooters, like ASU and Tempe, when scooters were on the sidewalks, they actually couldn't go on campus because electronically via GPS, there was fencing. And so some of the language, it's a little vague, but that's the way it's framed. To your earlier question, which is very valid on the concerns about data, the way the team is thinking about it, and we try to synthesize things, and I think this is, and as I ramp up on all things, but part of the reason why we're asking for the provision, yeah, for the provision is, we agree, data is messy. It's been, you know, it's, there are standards. So at a base minimum from day one, we have a standardized template that we've actually seen other cities implement, that is like core, like consistent data that is universal that all of these companies have. Now, when I start digging into, and this is the slight delay we might see... Now, when I start digging into, and this is the slight delay we might see and the timing, but when I start digging into each unique company's specific data set, their table, the ability to pull it out quickly, that is where we might get a little more nuance. But at a base level standard, there is a minimum requirement that's part of the agreement.
But we'll be able to define the data standards that they need to comply with so we can put it in our system?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
And the hope is, and the reality is, like, this is all evolving for all of us. And so we know at a minimum, we want to see this. But we know there's more there. And we hope by like working with them and understanding where they bring, we actually collectively all learn and grow together.
Couple more things. So, and this is by way of the motion, right? And a couple of things I'd like to see here, and I can do it by amendment or just part of it. But number one, in terms of what data we're collecting, some of the data I'd like to see is the, how many fees are we collecting from the enforcement? And then I'd like to match that with the cost to the town of, you know, if we're sending $10,000 or spending $10,000 in enforcement but only collecting $5,000, I'd like to know what that gap is in the pilot. Okay? So that's one thing. Another thing is, we talked about last time, this would be subject to the privilege tax. And I think it's a reasonable thing to ask since they're using the public right of ways to help us with some of the M&amp;O costs on that. So I'd like to understand, you know, what, from privileged tax standpoint, we're collecting in terms of that, so we can kind of understand that budget impact and maybe direct that to the appropriate place so we could offset some of those. If we're just, and I want to make sure those are different, right? Because there's enforcement costs and enforcement fees, and then there's the privilege tax. So at least we can understand where that's coming from so we can allocate it appropriately. I'd hate for any revenues from this to just go to enforcement, and we don't have the money we need to do the M&amp;O that might take place from the wear and tear of the usage.
And I'd like to make a comment on that. I know in the section that there was a 10 cent per ride. And I know that when we met with the Bird team, they just threw that number out. And I don't know where the justification of the 10 cents, but I'm with you, because I'm not sure the 10 cents per ride obviously would potentially maybe meet that need. But I would like to understand how that 10 cent was agreed upon by staff as related to Councilmember Taylor's comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. When we met with Bird, when I met with Bird personally, I heard 5 cents per ride. And then when I did some research and in talking with the team, 10 cents per ride was what a lot of the cities locally have been requesting. Of course, you've heard that Tempe's fees were quite high, and it's the reason why a lot of companies have retracted from there. But 10 cents per ride is what the city of Phoenix is pursuing in the spring. And I thought with Phoenix being the largest city here, and them leaning the way that we could probably get 10 cents per ride. And outside of that, it is just a common number that we saw across the cities that we researched, so.
So are you proposing 1.5% on everything rather than 10 cents per ride?
No, I'm okay with the recommendation. I just want us to be able to have good data to say, you know what, that's not enough, or we don't like it that way. Just something to start with.
Okay.
Yeah. It's definitely hard, it's definitely hard to judge right now what our costs are going to be.
Right. But if we can at least collect it, we got a baseline of data we can start to work with.
Okay.
Okay, so that's something that we'd like to direct. And in terms of the pilot, is some of the data collection that I didn't see already in there that would help us on the budgetary side of this. The pilot term, if I heard you correctly, you were thinking 12 months. And I'm okay with, I'd like to have some date. I was putting six months, but I'm open to eight or 12 or whatever we think. But I'd like to be able to at least tell the field, this is for a specific amount of time. So there's some predictability. And we would know when we would get a report back. I think it does need at least six months, maybe more, to get a good data set. So, but I'd like to see that direction in there. And then last thing, Mayor, because this is learning, I want to make sure that all this is in the spirit of learning. One of the things in here on the enforcement side, there's a lot of references to Section 1-1. And that's effectively the authorization to levy $2,500 fee or six months in jail for a violation of this. Now, because this is a pilot, we're trying to learn, I know the intent isn't to necessarily do that, but people will, unless there's specific direction, that, I'd like to have a warning in place because we're in a learning, it's a pilot. I talked to Chris and Nancy a little bit earlier. They did give me some language, and maybe they can speak to it. But I'd like to basically allow or require a warning to be issued prior to levying any penalties.
Are you talking about a warning to the rider? Or you're talking about a warning to the company?
To the company.
Okay.
Right.
Chief?
Mayor and Councilmember Taylor, to further dissect that even further, when you're talking the pilot program, you're seeing all the fees. And that's, the intent is that the, all the rules are within the pilot program, that this fee structure will take care of that. And not so much the warning piece of it. We don't have a mechanism other than 311, the 311 app, of tracking that. And that's why we want to use that app to track the violations, the notices from us to the companies, and then the procedures for picking, fixing the problem. Failure to respond to that notice would be a fee. And then if we send a company out, is the theory that we would contract this out, they would go out and verify it's still in violation, and that's where those other fees would take in place. Now, when you're talking about the ordinance itself, which applies to everybody, not just the pilot companies that are doing business on the scooters, the ordinance in which it's a civil penalty, that would apply to everyone. And it's really no different than any of our other ordinances in which, anytime we have a new ordinance, we always have an educational piece. We will use not only social media, but our officers as well, code enforcement, anybody that comes across a violation of encouraging, doing the educational piece. At some point, you've got to start taking enforcement action. But we're not looking to cite Johnny, 10-year-old riding down the street with his scooter. There is that enforcement component as far as the education first, that'll always come first. But I have concerns over mandating in the ordinance, when you look at all of our town ordinances, the majority of them where there's a violation, it is a civil penalty. There's a few that are specifically called out for misdemeanor. We didn't want that on here. We didn't want it to be a crime to ride your scooter in Gilbert. So we wanted that to be a civil penalty. We will do everything we can on the educational piece as this rolls out, as these new ordinances come out. But to legislate that in the ordinance, I'm concerned with that because, and I'll take it even further, when you look at just the ordinance, when you talk about obstructions, it's not just scooters, it's not just bikes. It could be dumping garbage, it could be construction debris. And so if I have someone that dumped some debris on a sidewalk, I would have to give them a warning because the ordinance requires me to do a warning. And I cannot, in that case where it's extreme, give them a site for that civil violation. I would be mandated by the ordinance to give them a warning first. And then if they dump again, I could give them the site. So that's my concern with in mandating a warning, because it doesn't just apply to scooters. And when you talk about the, or excuse me, the pilot program itself, this fee structure is designed, we'll obviously have the educational piece for the riders and everything else. The main focus on this is making sure that we have controls over the companies and the rules. And when they're left out, it's very rare when we will on view see someone dump a scooter in an obstruction, obstructing a sidewalk. That may happen, and we will use our educational component at that time to have them put in the proper place. But this fee structure allows us to address those that we don't know who wrote it, and we don't know who left it there, but yet it's responsible to these companies for where they're located at. And so we're trying to set up this system to keep us out of it, give them proper notification to move it so they don't incur these fines.
Mayor, if I may. Chief, thank you for that. I appreciate those comments. I mean, that is important. And I did talk to Nancy and Chris about A-frames, or we just talked about bulk trash being in the road as well. And is that going to be subject to this obstruction? And it sounded like they were, you know, circumscribing the law, you know, this pilot to really just talk about the scooters at this point. So I'm glad that we're not going to confuse that. But let me just address the point that you talked about, because I think, I want to reference two things, and this is before you came here, Chief. We have, you know, asked as a matter of policy to issue warnings. And we've done that in the past, just because some of the time, it did come across punitive. And we wanted it to be in letter, because while one officer really does take an education, another one is not. And so because it's mandated, that reflected the will of the council under Mayor Lewis, where we did actually do that. Another thing that I want to remind everybody on is, and this was probably 10 years or so ago, council took an action on a water conservation issue. And the effect of a broken sprinkler was up to six months in jail or $2,500. And there were recall papers pulled on that item. Council quickly turned that around, so it never actually went to a vote. But there was concern of the residents that it was just too punitive because there wasn't a mandated warning. So that's some of the history and the background of where I'm coming from on that and why I think it does make sense to have that wording in there. Now, that's just my opinion, I'm just speaking for myself. And Mayor, I appreciate that. But those three things, let me just summarize, and then I'll be done here. One is, I would like to see explicit warnings. I would like to see a defined time period, whether it's six months or 12 months, whatever we think, but at least some period for the pilot, maybe it's just phase one of the pilot. And then those metrics that we talked about to just help us on the budgetary side, understand what, you know, what this means in terms of enforcement dollars and M&amp;O dollars potentially. Mayor, thank you for the generous amount of time.
Mayor, if I may, in regards to the time period, our commitment is to come back to the council one year from today and report on the pilot program. We did have a lot of discussion about putting an actual, excuse me, specific timeframe on it. We opted against that because we may find six months into the program that there is a need to either discontinue the program or to make a substantial modification to the program that was represented to you tonight. So we wanted to build some flexibility in there, but with a firm commitment that we will come back to the council in a year with our findings from the program and any recommendations going forward on a permanent solution for this in our community.
Questions, other comments?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I just want to clarify, this does apply to personal scooters as well, recognizing we can't get data and information. But if personal scooters or personal bikes are obstructing the sidewalk, there's no jail time. But I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're talking about, and I think the reason this is important is because there are a lot of things that have been obstructing our sidewalks over the last little while, scooters that get all, that have been getting all the attention, but.
Correct, Mayor and Council. So the ordinance applies to everyone. And so we did construct, some of the issues we were concerned with, we put into the pilot because it becomes difficult to enforce some of those for kids, so to speak. And so an obstruction would apply to private or public, anyone as far as where they're ridden. The one thing that we can't control and why we didn't put in the ordinance is the speed. Where in the pilot program, through the apps and the machines, we can restrict where they go and the speed. Our signage will restrict where the private ones go. So the example we showed with Gilbert Road, that's, if that's what we move forward with, that's where it would be prohibited for public and private. Now, I can't shut it down because I don't control their scooter, but it would be a violation, and that would be something we would educate them on. Now, if they keep doing it the same repeat person, then we'd give them a site. But in that situation, that piece would apply to everyone in the ordinance. It says as prohibited by signage. And we don't want to list specific streets because it may expand as we grow. So that would apply to everyone, but it is civil. And we would follow that up with the education first.
Thank you. Oh, one, one comment. See, it says whole team, I love it.
Mayor Daniels, I just wanted to add one thing. We currently do prohibit obstructions, and it is subject to 1-5 as a civil penalty. But the problem is, we didn't have a mechanism to do anything about it. So it just said, oh, it's unlawful, but we didn't have the ability to move them over or impound them. So that's the difference. And also, I wanted to just clarify, the written warning portion, would it be, if the concern is about a written warning to the company, then we can put that in the terms and condition. But if we want the written warning to apply across the board, whether it's private scooter citizen and the scooter company, then that would be in the ordinance. So I wasn't sure, maybe we can, when making the motion, just clarifying if we want a written warning.
Let's clarify it now, because I might be in favor of one but not the other. And I want to just make sure that I understand what we're talking about. Did you mean?
No, that's an important distinction that they're making. And to me, and I'd love to hear other people's viewpoints on this, we should learn from both the formal operators and the informal operators, to the extent we can. Because the fact of the matter is, is we're going to have both in our town, and we're going to need to learn that. So I'm kind of leaning towards both, but I don't want that, if we just go to the vendor scooters, perfectly fine there. But at the end of the day, we're going to have to regulate both of them. So maybe learn.
I think I'm in favor of it for the pilot program, if we wanted to make sure that we issued a warning to them as we sort of learn and grow. But I, but I don't think I want to take it off of the actual ordinance.
If I may, Mayor and Council, can I clarify one other thing?
Please.
To clarify, would this warning be per company or per scooter? Because if I have 20 scooters.
I know, and you have like seven different categories. So would we have to provide a notice, a warning for each of the categories for fee? Like, okay, so you didn't pay your taxes, now we're going to give you a warning that you didn't pay your taxes. We probably do need to get more specific. And I guess the other piece is, we can always make adjustments to this later. I do feel like we need some structure in place. Our residents have asked us to put some structure in place. So if I'm being totally honest, I'm totally fine with the way that it's presented to us, recognizing that in three months, if we find that, you know, we've gotten a complaint that we unfairly cited someone and they felt like they were, you know, civil rights were being violated, that we could have that conversation and we can talk about that. But I don't see PD specifically. When I see the ambassador-type nature that they have in our Heritage District, which I've gotten a lot of feedback from, that there's a real positive rapport, especially in downtown, between our officers that are there daily and the residents and the businesses, they're not, they're not going to be out there citing the guy who just arrived from Canada and is just enjoying our sunshine. You know what I mean? Like, I said Canada for you, Nancy, I just wanted you to know, the Canadian.
And I don't disagree with that. That's why I don't think it should be a big deal to include it, if they're doing that already.
But mandatory warning, mandatory warning makes it harder for them if there is a blatant violation of a dumping of trash on the sidewalk. It makes it much, and everybody knows you're not supposed to put trash on the sidewalk. Like, they really need a warning?
Well, I cited the history of what, on this particular case. So I'm going to move it, and then if it goes, it goes, it doesn't, it doesn't. But.
Got it.
How do you give a warning to somebody? Meaning, if someone's riding their scooter and they're doing it wrong, and you give a warning, there's no connection that I know that police has a warning to anybody. So I can't go look at Jordan Ray or Jared Taylor's history and say, Jared's been given three warnings, Jordan has two warnings or 20 warnings. So I don't know how police can give a warning to a person, because it's not notated anywhere.
So Mayor and Councilmember Ray, that is problematic in the fact that we can do a written warning. Now, keep in mind that when we do this, now we're generating a report. Now we've got to have someone enter all this information into the database. And then we, if we're going to take a second action on that, now we have to be able to prove that they served it with that first written warning. And conversely, with a private scooter in this example that's left on a sidewalk, my recommendation to my officers would be, if it's a safety hazard and we do not know who it belongs to, rather than me impounding it and taking it in, and if they call to say, hey, my scooter got stolen, well, that was us, here's what you need to get it back, and here's your written warning. In those situations where it's not a safety hazard, we would just move it to the side. But I do, I do not know who that belongs to in those private, unless their name's on it, and I can call them up and say, hey, you need to come move your scooter, and here's your written warning. But it's very difficult for us to know who the private ones are, where in the pilot program, if you want the written warning in there, we have the contract. We know who it belongs to, we can see it in there, or I can look on my app and see who it belongs to. So it's a lot easier to enforce, whether it's written or first-time violation, through the program as opposed to through the ordinance where I don't know who that belongs to. Even in the example I gave, of someone dumping trash, unless I see them do it, I don't know who it belongs to.
And Mayor, when you and I met with Bird, they were very clear to say that if a user had an infraction from their belief. had an infraction from their belief, they would be able to penalize that user themselves. So they'd either not let them ride again for a while, whatever steps that they choose to take. So I think they're doing their own enforcement at the same time that we're doing our own enforcement. And I would assume, I haven't dealt with any other companies or met with any companies, but I'm assuming they would be doing something similar. I'm hoping, anyway. A follow-up on that issue.
Councilmember Peterson, in our terms and conditions, there is language on there that essentially says, whatever obligations you have under the agreement, you can't push them off to your customer. So they can't push off their indemnification like they do maybe with other companies where they say, oh, yeah, we agreed to indemnify you, and then they push it off to the customer, now the customer has to indemnify us. That's not going to happen.
But Nancy, if somebody rides a scooter and then just leaves it someplace that they're not supposed to, two or three times, they can enforce that user to maybe not ride for a while, something like that.
Right.
So they have their own enforcement for certain situations.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Lot of information in a 24-hour window that we had to read, so that was very, very hard to just kind of go through all the different items here. I just want to focus on a couple of things. The rules of operation was part for me that a lot of it was very subjective. An example, "The owner of the micro-mobility device shall be responsible for all damage to public property caused by the micro-mobility device." Well, that to me is the writer's issue in a lot of ways, and it just seemed like if a writer rented out their device, I mean, that just seemed like it's now the responsibility of, you know, like Bird. And I just felt like, you know, they're just, again, how does they get identified as property damaged? Does that mean that, you know, PD would have to take a report, try to investigate and follow up, you know, if this device was in this area that caused the damage? I just don't know how we enforce that. Another section here was, I was talking to the team about, we see parents riding these or maybe older siblings, and then they have a younger individual riding double. And in the language, it says, "No operator of the mobility device shall allow passengers unless the device was designed by the manufacturer to allow the passengers." Well, I haven't seen anything that has given to us what the design criteria of these devices are, because they're not providing us what the manufacturer designed, if it's a one-person or a two-person or a three-person device. Again, it's very subjective. But again, how do we enforce something that we may visually believe only one person should be riding, but really was made for two? So again, there was just some things in here that I just felt they were very subjective. I don't know how we enforce that.
Have you really seen a two-person scooter before? I'm just asking.
Again, I'm just sharing, you know, some of the language that was in here. And I think if I understand correctly, in the theme of the ordinance, as children can ride bicycles on the sidewalk and elsewhere, I'm assuming we're going to do the same thing with the mobility devices, that there will be no restriction, you don't need a driver's license to operate this. I'm assuming we're kind of in that same vein, that we're going to allow non-driver license operators use these. Is that correct, Chief?
So Mayor and Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cook, there are no license requirements for either.
Yep.
There in the ordinance, there are restrictions in 62 for both micro-mobility and bicycles. So the example you gave of a 10-year-old riding the bicycle on the sidewalk, technically the ordinance would not allow that, whereas a micro-mobility device, it would. So there are distinctions between both on what is allowed on sidewalks and the streets.
And as it relates to capturing data, the one piece of data that I would like to also capture is the injuries that occur to our residents. You know, it may be, you know, 911 where PD, you know, or fire shows up and PD shows up to provide some assistance. I would like to keep track of injuries as part of the data collection.
Yeah. Mayor and council, Vice Mayor Cook, so far, we've had two since Bird arrived in November, and both of them were near Santan Mall. Both were, well, I can tell you, one was a violator on the scooter, the other one was operator. Actually, there was dual responsibility on the other one. Fire has responded to more calls than we have for injuries that weren't accident-related involving a motor vehicle. I don't have their data, but so far, we've had two. And we'll continue to track that.
Mayor, thank you. This is probably for Nicole. Thank you, Nicole. And I think that baby's going to come out saying "micro-mobility."
I do, too.
My question is, and you kind of went by it very quickly, the 25 mile an hour speed limits and the streets that scooters are allowed on. So if I calculate that correctly, that's like the Heritage District and neighborhoods, pretty much. But you also mentioned reducing speeds in Santan area, and Chief just mentioned that area. I know that we've had a lot of issues with accidents, car accidents, never mind scooters, and now a couple with scooters. Can you explain some of that? If we're limiting to 25 miles an hour, is that going to limit where the scooters are placed? Because why would you place them at the bus stop at Gilbert and Ray if they can't even ride it on Gilbert Road, that far south? See what I'm saying?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Peterson. So the thought with the 25 mile an hour was to restrict them to residential streets, and then with the no-go zone that we're calling it on Gilbert Road, that would prevent that one from being ridden on, which of course is 25 miles an hour. And then we also have the ability to identify other zones that are possibly 25 miles an hour that we don't want them on. They would be allowed to be on sidewalks, so that is where they could get from a bus stop and use the sidewalks. Again, they would have to dismount to cross a 45 mile an hour street. And so any area that is prohibited, we would want them to walk across to get back on the sidewalk or to get back on the canal, or to get to a residential street.
And right now, bicyclists are supposed to be in bike lanes, not on sidewalks, correct?
Correct.
And they're supposed to dismount to cross the street, is that correct?
Correct. If they're not using the bike lane, they're supposed to dismount and they crosswalks.
I watched two today at Gilbert and Elliott do not that.
It's one of the things we're trying to promote in Bike Month.
Yes, yes. I watched two cross on the bikes, off of the sidewalk, across the street.
May I ask a question about that? So if a major arterial road like Guadalupe, like by my house, has a bike lane in the street, but I'm afraid to ride in that bike lane because I don't believe that white line, that invisible barrier is going to protect me, can the bicycle rider still ride their bicycle on that sidewalk even though the street has a bike lane and it's 45 miles an hour?
I want the chief to answer this. It's my understanding that they can ride it, but that they are, would be treated as a pedestrian. But if I'm wrong on that, I want the chief to say...
Yeah, let me look at it real quick, but my understanding is no. That the way the ordinance is written, that the bicycles, and I want to just clarify, if there's no bike lane, I think they may. So let me just...
Well, again, that's what I'm going to say. I want to make clear that when I was reading this, that was one of the things that got my attention.
That is my understanding.
Is that we're going to prevent for those riders that are afraid to ride their bicycle in the bike lane, because they don't trust that invisible barrier or white line to protect them, they should have the option to be on that sidewalk.
Just to clarify, though, this is not a topic that's part of this ordinance or...
Well, I think it may be, because I think there was something in the ordinance...
Well, you could add it, but we're not changing where bikes can and can't go in this ordinance.
Well, I thought I read something in this ordinance that talked about the bicycles as it relates to where they can ride or not ride, in this particular change.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, in 62-106, in Section B, existing language, this isn't a change, while riding on sidewalks in locations, and so this applies to bicycles, while riding on sidewalks in locations where bicycling is permitted, bicyclists shall yield the right-of-way to pedestrians, and then we added this language, and other users by slowing down, stopping or moving to the opposite side of the path, sidewalk, or rather applicable travelway. So there is an exception. I apologize, I said that it's banned, it's not. There are restrictions on where they can and can't, but in this case, they would be able to.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that was clarified.
Mayor and council, just to clarify that in the town, you can ride on the sidewalk bicycles unless there's signage saying you cannot.
Oh.
As long as there's no signage, it's permissible.
Thank you. And to follow up with something that Vice Mayor Cook said about dual scooters, two people or three people, I think we've seen how fast this micro-mobility has changed, and I don't think we can even predict what this will look like in a year, when we come back to talk about this again, if that's how long we go out. So anything is possible, the sky's the limit. How do we, are we actively looking at lowering the speeds in Santan Village, Santan area?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Peterson, we have already worked with PD. That would be one of our first rollout items here, is to identify these areas as restricted to 10 miles per hour. And I know that PD actually rented some scooters themselves and tested the speeds, so...
Oh, I wish I had seen that.
I do, too. I was in a meeting, I missed it, but...
Please tell me somebody videotaped that.
Please tell me. Okay.
Yes, there's video.
Can you send it to me?
I just want to clarify, Councilmember, are you talking about the speeds of the scooters or are you talking about the speed zones?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. So are we going to lower the speed zones in that area for vehicles?
I can't answer the vehicles, but for this, we're looking to restrict in Santan Village area, the mall, the Village Parkway, we're looking for the pilot program, because that's the only one we can control, limiting the speed to 10 miles per hour max in those corridors, where we've seen those accidents.
For the scooters, specifically, okay.
I'll have you ask traffic about their speed limits. I know nothing about changes.
Well, that's why I asked, because I was a little confused. There's a lot of information here, like Councilman, Vice Mayor Cook said.
And that's something that for a private-owned scooter, we're not going to be running radar on scooters, and that's why it's in the pilot, not in the ordinance.
But the scooter company can control the speed that they allow their scooters to be at with the geofencing. Because Mayor and I talked to Bird about that specifically.
With a privately-owned one, I don't know if you can adjust it or not, but we did do a test. We picked three random scooters, max speed was 16 miles per hour on those scooters. It averaged between 13 and 16.
Next time, I want to call for that. Okay. I think my questions are done for now. Thank you, Mayor.
We're not going to know the answers to these questions or collecting the data unless we move on. Let's move on tonight.
Where were you 20 minutes ago? Thanks, Councilwoman Radisson. We appreciate you. All right, are we ready? All right, I think Vice Mayor's ready.
I move that we approve agenda item 19A with a small change, and that small change is actually found in the title of the resolution, that we replace the word "matrix" with the word "terms."
We have a motion and a second and an amendment?
Well, I do have an amendment coming, but can we have the Vice Mayor explain what he's accomplishing on that one? I don't think I'm following that. Yeah, again, it's actually in your document there. Oh, I'm sorry. That you can read on the bottom.
PD, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, it was just a minor typo that we caught with being under a tight timeframe. And originally, we're going to have it all in a matrix form, and we changed it to a very legal document form. So it's just a typo.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second, but hold that vote.
Yeah. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the motion. Three amendments. Motion to approve the ordinance with modifications to Section 54-1, 62-103, 62-106, 62-142, to require a written warning prior to a civil penalty.
We have a motion, is there a second just for the amendment? Okay, that motion fails for a lack of second, so we move to the original motion and call for the vote.
Mayor.
Oh.
Mayor, and maybe this doesn't, maybe this is a point of order. This probably doesn't need to be an amendment, but we need, I'd like to make sure we have direction to staff to collect the data.
The data fees and costs, yeah.
So would you like that as a motion or would you like...
I think we can continue that as part of just the direction to staff, because they're coming back to us lots of times over the next year on this.
All right, very good, thank you.
And you guys caught that, it's immortalized in writing? Okay, perfect. We have a motion and a second on the table, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Pilot proceeds. Just a quick question. I noticed sort of overnight, we went from having Bird scooters everywhere to Lime scooters everywhere, and I didn't see any Birds today. Can you just tell us what happened?
We don't know exactly, except we do know, well, I heard rumors that about 200 Limes were dropped here, and I think just yesterday. And Kyle has an app that he checks, and they're heavily down in the Heritage District.
I saw a lot today.
We haven't been contacted by Lime that I am aware of. If anybody in intergov here has been, let me know, but nope.
I haven't gotten any emails or anything? Okay, good.
We'll be reaching out, trying to get a contact for that company as well.
Perfect, thank you.
And Mayor, I'm going to dust off my Razor scooter from 10 years ago when Gilbert, you know, PD pulled me over on the sidewalk. I'm going to resurrect it and go down the sidewalk and...
With your cowboy hat on, they'd have more compassion probably for you.
Well, I have to have a helmet, right, or something. Did you get a warning?
That doesn't count.
Did you get a warning, Vice Mayor Cook?
They pulled me over. I was kind of a little bit shocked by it, but I got a warning. Yeah, I didn't get a ticket.
Sounds a little bitter still, that's what I hear. All right, you guys can ask him after the council meeting, let's proceed. We have completed Agenda Items 20 and 21 under Administrative Items. That moves us to Agenda Item 22, a Boards Commissioning Committee Report. Anything from the council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, just an update on the Subcommittee on Building Codes. That's continuing to move forward. I know you've been waiting for this update all night. Councilmember Yentus and Anderson have been good to get the updates from the town. Appreciate Kyle's team. We do have one more meeting to just pull together some thoughts and recommendations for April. We're thinking, I guess there's just one council meeting in April, if that's still when you'd like to report out, but we're still on pace for that. Do we have two? Okay, I think it'll be the second one in April. If that's still what you're thinking, we're on pace for that. We just wanted to let you know that that's still coming forward. So Mayor, if I could just add one more thing. For those that haven't been to the meetings but want to see what the changes are to the building codes, there is a page online where all of the changes for residential and commercial are posted in a lot of detail. So there's some people that really like that, there's others that really don't, but want to make sure that that public information is out there, and it's been up there for about a month. And I think the people that we hear from on this topic on a regular basis had a lot of input already. They're continuing to have a lot of input, and we're looking forward to the report out. So thank you, Mayor.
I think we could all name them, because we're grateful for their continued investment in the town.
Mayor, I'll do an update on the LDC Committee. We have been feverishly meeting every other week and making great progress, but it is quite an undertaking to take on the LDC that hasn't been updated in more than 10 years, like 14 years now, so, but we're working hard.
And we have flexible timelines on that, recognizing that it is a huge undertaking, and we just happen to be doing a general plan update at the same time and launching a census and a new strategic plan for the town, and, you know, just a few things. So all hands on deck, and the team is hard at work, so we appreciate that. That moves us to Agenda Item 23, a policy item on our appraisal and acquisition disposition policy for the town. We need to have a vote on this one? We did that a little bit backwards, but there is a 23 on here. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 23.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. And really, this is something that we've had in policy, but now we have incorporated it into code, so we're grateful for the efforts of our team to make sure that it's documented. Report from the town manager on current events. Patrick?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. First, I wanted to extend appreciation to our water conservation group. We held our eighth annual Water Festival in partnership with Project Wet. It was two days long. We had 1,700 fourth graders participate in it, 70 volunteers were involved, and to remind you, it's a partnership between the town and Gilbert, AZ Project Wet, and the Gilbert Public School District, with the intention of educating the children on learning about our watersheds, groundwater, our water cycle, and water conservation technology. So it's become a great event for us, and our local conservation team did great work on it, and we thank them for that. Next, I'd like to, and it feels like it's half the organization to thank, but... Next, I'd like to, and it feels like it's half the organization to thank, but this scooter-pilot program involves so many different members of our organization with various aspects that are touched upon, and I really appreciate the work, Nicole, Nancy, Chief Solberg, Shyla, Amy, Renee, Jessica, and many, many more. If I've forgotten anyone, you have my gratitude. This is something that I think is going to become the new norm for us as technology continues to be developed and change the way we live our lives and the way we get around our communities. We're going to have to properly establish many pilots through the years as we work with these companies to give them the access to our communities so they can understand their product and how consumers are going to want to use them, and we begin to understand how to create an environment to where they can be enjoyed safely and effectively. And we'll look forward to working with you as we continue to understand the scooter pilot and how to best allow the scooters to be utilized in our community. So, thank you for passing that tonight. We'll look forward to reporting back to you on it.
We want to have the video of you on the scooter next, so I think that's the next video we'll ask Gilbert Digital to shoot. Report from Council on Current Events. Councilmember, Vice Mayor?
Mayor and Council, thank you. You remember back in December, we approved of the Civility Resolution? And just to let all of you know, I'm taking that on a road tour, and will be, to the best of my ability, visiting our 91 cities. I've started with Tucson this week and went to Phoenix just yesterday. So, I'm sharing that with those councils and encouraging them to come up with their own form of resolution of civility in their communities. So, just letting you know, if you get tapped on the shoulder, that's something that I'm moving forward with. But thank you.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank Kelly Fost and all of the individuals who participated in our financial retreat last week. That was so helpful as we really sort of paint the financial picture for the next year. So, Kelly, thank you. There you are. But I know it took a lot of people. Jessica Marlowe had to present on several items. We had Eric Braun. Really, just a tremendous amount of individuals who participated in that, so thank you. And I did want to actually touch on this pilot program development, because it did take so many different individuals and so much, really so much work. But as new technologies come into the town, what we're attempting to do is create a process that is really the framework that we could repeat over and over and over again as it comes to the new technologies.